Asking, yes, I've started the recording.
Awesome, thank you.
You bet. And I'll work with, before you leave, I'll let you know that I will, I'll work with Crystal, who is our working as a technical support for this and to make sure that that gets out to not just you, but to everyone.
I have a kindergarten graduation and two interviews to do right now.
Oh, boy, you are busy. All right, very good. Well, thank you for letting me know.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
You're very welcome. One person I don't see here is Monica. Anyone know if Monica will be, Yazi will be joining us?
Binder number for your passcode?
No, it's just my email, my name, my email.
Hello, everyone. Please be sure to mute yourselves just so we can prevent echoes and all that fun stuff that usually happens during these virtual trainings.
You read my mind, Crystal. I was just gonna say that, everyone mute, and then if you happen to have a question or a comment, then unmute yourself during the presentation. Otherwise, we'll get so much feedback. I don't know how it is on your end, but on my end, the feedback is overwhelming with all those microphones on.
Yes. Vince, if you'd like, you can, on the participant list, on my name, you can promote me to a co-host. And I can actually change the setting to mute participants on entry.
Sharing will end if you change the presenter to Crystal. Do you want to continue?
Co-host, co-host.
I'm not seeing co-host as an option.
No?
Make presenter?
If you right-click, it doesn't have the option of co-host?
Make presenter.
No? All right, well, then with that.
But I can do that. I can mute all.
Perfect.
I have it right here in front of me.
Awesome.
I can do that. In fact, I'll do that now, so from what I can tell, everyone is muted, but then the only way, then we will have to go into the chat box if you have any questions, which is fine.
Good morning. This is
Good morning.
Oh, before you mute me, I just want to say good morning and thank you for providing this training for our program managers. Thank you.
You're very, very welcome. Who was that that was speaking? I missed it because people are going in and out on my screen. All right, no worries. Or Alvin, okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and get started because it's 10 after, 10 after the hour. And I, you know, I want to move through this material as quickly and methodically as possible. I know you're all super busy people. So are we at the Native Learning Center. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about grant writing and to follow up tomorrow. Something funny, Crystal? I see you falling out of your chair laughing. Anyway. My name is Vince Franco, and I am one of the staff people here at the Native Learning Center. Been here for 10 years. My background is with nonprofit organizations. I was the executive director of a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit organization for a number of years. I also worked for a nonprofit private school, also for a private college for a number of years where I ran the the Endowment Program there. I was on a board, been on several boards, Board of Directors as a board member over the years. I've been doing this, graduated college way back in 1980. So I've been doing this for a number of years, working with nonprofit. And it's kind of the reason or the background that I brought to the Native Learning Center 10 years ago when I started as the compliance manager back then, and then became promoted to the director after about a year and a half. And so I'm bringing that, that knowledge and that background in grant writing, hopefully, to this group. Been to Rama Navajo School Board a couple times over the past four or five years, doing different presentations. Have not done grant writing. This is gonna be, it's not a new, it's not a new venture for me, doing a grant writing presentation, but it's the first time doing it for Rama Navajo. So I'm very much, very, very eager to get going here and to share this information. There's really, other than the PowerPoint presentation, there are no other materials to present to you. Crystal, are you trying to tell me something? I'm gonna mute everyone. Can you hear me?
Are you good, Vince?
I'm good. I can see you waving your arms, and I thought you were trying to get my attention.
No, I'm talking to Louis about getting the registration link. So what we're gonna, hello, everyone. I'm Crystal Sedino. I am the Training and Development Manager for the Native Learning Center. I'm thrilled that all of you were able to join today, so thank you so much. I need all of you to register for this virtual training session as it's, it's a technical assistance. You know, Vince is providing information on grant writing. What I am going to do is plug a link into the chat box, and you'll go ahead and click that link and then fill out the registration page. I need, need, need all of the information that's required on there, and I really need all of you to fill it out because it's part of our compliance. And Vince is the compliance guy, so I'm sure he will reiterate over and over again. Please fill that out if you haven't had a chance yet. So I'm gonna be adding that momentarily. I'll turn my camera off so I don't distract you, Vince, and you can go ahead and get going. So sorry about that. But I will plug that in, so be on the lookout. It's an Eventbrite link. And then I'll be sure to email it to Vince so that before the end of the session, he can go ahead and replug that in so that I'm making sure whoever else has joined after you all have started, that you can go ahead and fill that out for us. Can I get a thumbs up if we understood all of that and you're, you're good?
Good on my end, Crystal.
Good on your end, participants. There's a, thank you, Cynthia. There's 19 of you. Thank you, Anderson. I'd really like to get confirmation from all of you, so I only have confirmation from two. The thumbs up, but thank you, Janice, is around the exit button. Alvin.
Thank you.
Again, there's 19. Penelda, thank you. Dorothy, thank you. I just wanna make sure, it's a key component to our grant. It's a requirement. Please, 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 fill it out. All right, with that, I'm gonna hush, turn off my camera, and you'll see a plugin for that link momentarily.
Yeah. Thank you, Crystal. Thank you, Crystal. Thank you very much. Crystal is the manager of our Training and Development Department. She and I work very, very closely. And what she's alluding to, from a compliance standpoint, yes, that is, that is my real job. I'm not a trainer per se, subject matter expert, yes, but not, not technically a trainer. I'm the compliance director for the Native Learning Center in the Seminole Tribe of Florida. And she's absolutely right that we, we need to have that information, that registration information. So please take a moment during this, this presentation to fill out the information she's asking for because that is part of our requirement. We receive our funding, Native Learning Center does not receive any monies at all from the Seminole Tribe in Florida, just the opposite. We receive all of our funding through the department, through HUD, Housing and Urban Development, Native Ameri-, the Division of Native, Office of Native American Programs through the Nahazda Act, Native American Self-Determination Act of 1996, is the legislation. And the grant that is administered through the Office of ONAP, Office of Native American Programs, is the IHBG, which is an acronym for Indian Housing Block Grant. The, the regulations that pertain to that require us to keep track of attendance, who has attended, email address, your title, that type of stuff. So we have to monitor all of that because, you know, just like anything else, it's all, HUD is looking for numbers. They wanna make sure that we're reaching out and we're doing our training for X amount of people out there that are affiliated with tribes. Actually, what we're supposed to be doing, Nahazda, is all about low-income housing. So that's really our mission, is to provide training related to low-income housing. Obviously, the Navajo Nation has a lot of low-income housing. So that's why we're allowed to do training for all of the different chapters of, of the Navajo Nation. And we've been to several of them over the years. I think I've been to four, five, or six of them just myself over the past five or six years, maybe longer than that, seven or eight years. But anyway, very much for it, again, very much looking forward to this presentation. So let me go ahead and get started. I see Crystal has posted that Eventbrite.com link there, and as she, as she mentioned, please click on that link and, and provide the information she's looking for. Greatly appreciated. So without further ado, let, let's get into this. I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna split this presentation into, into two parts that make logical sense to me. There's basically four components that I'll be talking about over two days. Part one and part two I'll discuss today. Part three and part four will be tomorrow's presentation. We'll be starting at the same time tomorrow, so four parts altogether. Part one, hopefully, that you could see on your screen. Part one talks about a couple different things here. First of all, 10 key items, 10 key items that are important for new grant writers. And by the way, I want to stress that this presentation is really designed for individuals that are new to grant writing. The full name of the program is Fundamentals of Grant Writing. It's designed for, as I mentioned, for for those that don't know anything about grant writing or are relatively new to the fact. So 10 key items is my interpretation of 10 very important things that I think every grant writer should know or had access to. I'm also gonna talk about the importance of community involvement and program identification would be the second major area of part one. The third area I'll discuss is establishing the project team. And then the last part of part one is leveraging resources. So let me go ahead, and what I'm gonna try to do is do the presentation. I have two monitors set up here. I've actually got the presentation on my left monitor, so I can see what you're seeing. And then on my right monitor, straight ahead, I've got a visual of all the participants, or at least some of them. It's a big grid, so I don't have everyone in one single shot, but I can kind of see everyone that has their, their camera on. And then I also have the chat box in front of me. So I'm gonna be, you're gonna see me go kind of looking to the left and looking to the right. I'm looking to the left to watch the monitor of the presentation, but also jumping over to the, the straight-on camera on my right side screen to make sure that I'm keeping an eye, my right eye, so to speak, on the chat box to see if there's any questions or concerns that come up. So bear with me as we move through here. We've got a lot of material to cover in a short period of time. Today, we'll go as far as we can, and then we'll be done with parts one and part two. So course description, this course offers the fundamentals, hopefully, of solid grant writing and guidance on how to make your grant proposal stand out. Not only grant proposal, but just an understanding of the, basically, of the fundamentals. Keep this phrase in mind because it's, 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 it's done a lot for me in trying to understand the global approach to grant writing. You probably all have heard the phrase, "It takes a village." Takes a village to raise a child. That seems to be the most common cliche out there. I think it takes a village to create a, a, a successful grant application. And that's the point I'm gonna be talking about, in that there's a lot of subject matter experts out there within your organization that can play a very important part in putting together a successful quality grant application. So when I refer to the phrase, "It takes a village to, to create a successful grant application," I really do mean that, and I really do believe that. So the idea here is not only on part two, which I'll talk about tomorrow, which is actually putting together a solid grant proposal, but more than that, understanding the logistics that goes into grant writing and grant development. So I just wanna point that out. That's part of the grant description or course description. And the objective here, some of the objectives, actually all of the objectives, this session today, another way to look at this, this session today, we're gonna talk about four very, very important components. In section one or part one, better understanding of the role of a grant writer. That's the first thing. Those are the 10 key items I'll be talking about. Secondly, efficiently soliciting information from the community, quote unquote, whatever your community might be for project initiatives and project goals. There should be, grant writing, grant development should be a community-driven activity. That's the village, community-driven. Without it, then working independently, we're working in a vacuum. You really need to have the community, as however you define it, help us to project what those initiatives and goals are. Third thing in part three, or part one, developing the project team, as I mentioned before, and identifying leveraging resources. What are leverage, what is leveraging? Talk about that in a little bit. Then part two, this is the second half of today's presentation, I'll discuss strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, usually referred to by its acronym SWOT, SWOT analysis, which is looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of any organization. And that is quite a process to go through, but we'll take a look at that. And then also, we'll finish out the second part of today's presentation on goal development. Defining measurable, realistic initiatives, major initiatives, hopefully with the guidance of our community. And then from there, develop short-term and long-term goals that are measurable and attainable. Sometimes those are referred to as SMART goals. And with that, the SWOT analysis, and particularly the second half of item four, they're defining measurable and realistic initiatives and goals in the short term and the long term, we're gonna talk about, or I'm gonna discuss what's referred to as a logic model. The logic model is a phrase that is used to describe SMART goals. Without being able to determine SMART goals, whether it's in performance, our job performance, or in the development of goals related to grant activities, without SMART goals that are measurable and attainable and realistic and tangible, it's impossible to come up with initiatives that are doable, and it's impossible without SMART goals to be able to measure our performance, to measure, you know, what the, oftentimes, what funders are doing these days is they're asking us, as the recipient, the potential recipients of grant funds, how we're gonna measure our success in the programs. Because the funders definitely are interested in the success of the program before they even consider giving us a grant. They are considered, they all, all funders want to know what their return on investment is. You've probably heard that phrase before by the acronym ROI, return on investment. Funders are always looking for ways to increase their return on investment. So they're constantly asking us how we're going to measure our performance, how we're gonna measure the success of the program that hopefully is defined by the community. How are we gonna measure that success? Well, without the logic model helping us, without those tangible, realistic, SMART goals, that's impossible. It's impossible to do. It's just a dream. In other words, without realistic goals, our projects are nothing more than dreams and wishes and hopes. So I'm gonna, the second half of the presentation today, I'm gonna talk about where our strengths or where your strengths and weaknesses are or might be. And that's really a task for you to do, not so much for me. I'll explain it. You do it, or you figure it out. And then from there, we go into how to use the logic model to define what our realistic goals are. Hopefully, that makes sense. And then tomorrow, you see number, number five and number six are gonna be reserved for tomorrow's discussion. We'll talk a little bit about navigating a search for grant opportunities. If you've never done that before, I'm gonna talk about that, how to search some of the online portals that are out there. In particular, the one for federal funding, the one I'm most familiar with, and that's grants.gov. And if you've never been on grants.gov, it is the largest online portal of federal grant opportunities on the planet. It holds all of the federal agencies' grant opportunities, all of them, thousands of them. All of the federal agencies, from HUD that I mentioned a moment ago, through the Department of Energy, Department of Education, EPA, Health and Human Services, Energy, all of the major departments, and all of the funding that they have available is through, through those federal agencies, is available through grants.gov. And there's a way to navigate your way through it to help streamline your search for federal grant opportunities. So we'll talk about that tomorrow, tomorrow, the first part of tomorrow's presentation. I'll talk about that and how to navigate through that online portal for federal grant funding. Now, there are some other online grant portals that we'll talk about that are on the private side of federal funding and funding in general, and philanthropy in general. So I'll talk about that. And there's a couple, one in particular, an online portal for private funding that I wanna discuss with you, and we'll identify what that is and how to navigate through it. And we'll also talk, I'll also discuss some of the other opportunities such as community funding that's out there and some of the community funding organizations that are native centric, that are out there that you can apply to. And then we'll finish out the second half of tomorrow afternoon, talking about the actual grant narrative. And what I'm gonna do with that is go through the, the logistics of putting the, the seven components of putting together a quality grant application, seven components. I'll walk through each of those seven components so that you have a thorough understanding what are the major components of putting together a grant application. And then there will be, not only through the grant narrative, which is tomorrow afternoon, but also with some other stuff this afternoon, today, there will be some opportunities for you to, if we were face-to-face, I would call them group activities. But since we're not doing this so much face-to-face, it's a little more difficult to come together in group sessions. It's gonna be more of a think-tank situation. We'll be able to work on them independently, if you wish. But there will be some opportunities to work on some of these as a, as a project. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. And again, I'm going to make sure that I'm getting some feedback. So I'm just gonna go ahead and mute everyone. If you do have a question, go ahead and put something in the chat box so I at least recognize it. I'm keeping an eye on it, and then I can always unmute everyone if there's a series of questions. But this way, if I mute everyone, it stops all the feedback from coming back to me. You know, even tapping on your keyboard or moving things, it just, it, from, from my standpoint, with, with 23 participants, you can imagine there's a lot of static. So I'm just gonna go ahead and mute everyone unless you have a specific question. So let's get started here. All right. Jumping ahead. You should see a little graphic here of what's called the grant cycle. And what I'm gonna do is talk about three major components. This is just a different way to look at what I just talked about. At the very top, you'll see the community development process. That's where we're gonna start, the community development. Your, whatever you define as a community, maybe it's the school, maybe it's the participants, the family members, the, you know, the Rama Navajo community itself, whatever you define, or even your work group within the, within the school system, whatever community you define, that is the, that is a major focus. We're gonna, so we're gonna start this presentation by talking about the community. Then from there, we'll segue into the next major focus, and that is establishing the project team and the actual planning, the project team. Who's involved in this? It's not, we, we no longer work, or should no longer work, in silos. So grant writing is a perfect example of that, where we do need the village concept, we do need the community concept. Everyone in our circle of influence should be considered a subject matter expert to some degree. And we want to, part of the responsibility that I'll get into in a minute of grant writers, grant developers, whatever you call them, is to be able to harness that energy, liken it to an orchestra conductor who needs to understand all of the instruments of the orchestra, whether it be the woodwinds with their oboes and the clarinets, to, to the wind instruments, the piccolos and the flutes, and then to the strings, the violins and the violas, and the basses and the double bass, and then to the brass instruments, the trumpets, the trombones, the flugelhorns, the timpani, everything. He or she needs to under, not that he or she's a master of any of those particular instruments, but needs to understand how those instruments play a part in the overall orchestra and to be able to understand the music that accompanies those instruments. Same thing here with the grant writer. The grant writer needs to be able to educate his or her subject matter experts and to call upon them, and every moment is a teachable moment for when it comes to grant writing and grant writers in particular. They need be able to constantly be educating their circle of influence, their people that they work with or associate with, so that those folks understand that they might play a part of the bigger picture of grant writing, and they probably will. And if successful grant writers have mastered that concept, they've mastered the concept of being the orchestra conductor to be able to educate the group so that what is created itself, the creation, is larger than its individual. the creation is larger than its individual components. That's what orchestration is about. That is what grant writing is about. So establishing the project team is critical. And then the planning process is also critical. You've got, it's gotta flow in that order, from the community to the project team, to the planning, and then to the third part, which is on the graphic here, the green part, to the organization and the actual putting together or writing the package and the proposal for success. From there, it goes to grant management. And that's a whole nother training program that hopefully I can get involved with you down the road. That's a whole nother, now that we've got the grant, what do we do? That's grant management. And there's a whole understanding that comes with that and all the federal regulations. But right now, we're focusing on the develop, the community, as you can see in front of you, the community, then establishing the team and the planning, and then segueing into the organization and putting the package together. My, one of my favorite parts is the writing and the packaging of the proposal and understanding, as I alluded to before, the seven very important, it sounds like the Ten Commandments. It's the seven critical components of every grant narrative, whether it's for federal funding or whether it's for private funding. If you master the skills that goes with putting together the seven components of a grant narrative, you can write a grant for anything. Or whether it's for a federal funding through the Department of Energy, Department of Education, or for private foundations like the Bill and Melinda Gates, well, I guess that's gonna be the Melinda Gates Foundation these days, right? Not so much Bill anymore, from what I, from what I'm reading and understanding. But anyway, they're the largest private foundation in the world with assets over, what, thirty billion dollars? That's on the private side of funding. But once you master those seven components, then you should be able to write a grant for, for anything. So we'll get into that tomorrow afternoon. Again, one of my favorite areas. Not that these others are less important or less favorite, but that definitely is. So let's, let's get started here. Yes, someone asked, are we able to get this PowerPoint? Yes, of course, you'll be able to get this PowerPoint presentation. I will work with Crystal to make sure that you have access to it. We'll have to set that up probably with an email to all of you and then a link because it's too big. Even, even, even though there's separate PowerPoints for today and then a separate PowerPoint tomorrow, each one of them is nearly a hundred slides. They're way too massive to attach to a, to a dedicated email. So we'll, I'll work with Crystal to make sure that after today, you have... Actually, I think what we'll, what we'll do is we'll work, finish the presentation and then send you an email with the link so you can download both of that way. Because that's probably the best way to go. So back to the, to the presentation here, getting started. What is a grant? The question that eludes a lot of people, believe it or not, is the question, is a grant a gift? And if you think about it for a moment, you can go ahead and answer if you like. You know, you can put something in the chat box if you feel you want to, or you can raise a hand. But is a grant a gift? And I think the quicker we understand this, the better off we all will be if we don't understand it. No, grants by and large are not gifts at all. Think about it. A grant, especially from the funder's point of view, is an investment from a funder to a recipient, that's you or me or our respective organizations, for a particular purpose. And as I mentioned before, most, let's cross out the word most and say all, all investors, whether they're federal agencies or private firms or your neighbor or your church, whoever the funder is, wants to make sure that their return is, is good, that it was worthy to start with, that the grant does have some kind of return on investment. So that ROI, that acronym ROI, which means return on investment, is not just something that you hear about or should recognize in the, in the, in the private sector. You know, we do hear about that phrase in the private sector, but it also has massive implication, excuse me, on, on the grant side. Every, and the quicker we understand that concept and we can educate others to that, to that effect, that a grant is never, never should be misconstrued with, with being a gift. That would be extremely rare. There are always strings attached. And I hate to use that word strings attached because it sounds negative. There always are invest, it's an investment and there's always gonna be some kind of return that is gonna, that, that the funder's looking for, whether it's in the form of reports that have to be generated on a regular basis, that, that, you know, with information or with data or with a combination of both, that is the, the return. And hopefully, the return is in a positive mode so that the funder can see positive results. But if we don't have measurable and attainable goals, it will be impossible for us to measure our performance in order to provide that information and data to, to our funder. So again, a focus on, on goal setting and, and attainable goals. Then we'll get into that. It all flows together. Getting started, I wanna talk about my interpretation of ten key items for new grant writers and even for those that have done a little bit of grant writing in the past, but particularly for those that are new to grant writers. These are ten things that I think are, ten points that I think are critical for all grant writers. And that is kind of what I alluded to before. Get to know your community. What is your community? What is the source that you need to understand? Where is the information coming from? What is your community? Is it your colleagues that you work with or is it something bigger than that? Is it your constituents, whatever your constituents, whoever they are? Or is it even a broader sense? You need to define you and your, you know, as the grant writer or as the person responsible for putting together the grant proposal, need to define what the community is. So community is kind of an open-ended concept here. What is your community and what are the needs of the community? Do your research and determine what is needed. Let me go through these and then I'll go back. Is it program development? Is it general operating funds? Is it capacity building funds? Seed money to develop something, or is it for equipment? Is it for technology, for IT, hardware and software? Is it for building renovation or new construction, et cetera? Those are some, just a scratch of the surface of some of the major things that maybe a community would have in mind. You know, what is it? Is it, does the, is a community... When I do this presentation to some groups, they talk about, one, one thing they talk about was a community center. The community in general wanted to have, and they didn't have such a thing, was a community center where their elders and their youth and their veterans that were all members of the, of the tribe could come together. They needed a bricks and mortar, multipurpose community center. That's what the community, this particular community for this tribal housing authority wanted. And they did research with their community, which were the tribal members, in this case, a small group of tribal members and tribal elders. And they did some research. They brought people together. They did, brought them together face to face. They asked them what their needs were, what they were interested in. And the community center came out as their major initiative. That phrase, major initiative, will be something that I'll be talking about again as we get into goal development. But here's some others, program development, general operating funds. It doesn't necessarily have to be bricks and mortar that the community is looking for, such as general operating funds or capacity building, that type of thing, or seed money. Those are all more intangible type of things, or not bricks and mortar, but... So getting to know the community in any way possible and having a working relationship with the community in some way to get to know them. So get to know them is the first thing. Also, have a good understanding, like the orchestra conductor that I talked about before, a good understanding of the organization's mission, its existing major initiatives and its goals, if it has any goals that are established. That's imperative, too. Keep in mind that everything is based on the organization's mission. That is critical. That should be bolded there because everything reverts back to the organization's mission. If you don't understand the organization's mission, this is an opportunity for you to do so. You really should understand what is the focus, what is the vision, what is the mission of the organization. It's gonna play a significant role in your grant writing because everything ties back into what the mission is all about, all right? So understanding the organization's mission is simple as that. Hopefully, the mission is not complicated, cannot be easily misconstrued, and it's pretty straightforward. Each goal for every major initiative should be developed in accordance with the logic model and SMART system. Now, I alluded to that before, and I'm gonna get to that and quite extensively a little bit later this afternoon, but, or this morning, depending on your time here. But yeah, the important thing here is understanding the mission. All of your goals, of course, that we're gonna be talking about need to revert back to that mission. That's imperative. So knowing the mission is critical. Third, knowing the organization's economics and its financial operation. Not that you have to be the CFO of the organization or the controller or even the accountant or CPA or bookkeeper, but you need to understand where the revenues come from the organization and where the expenses go. Even in a general sense, you need to know the economics. What is the fundraising plan, if any, for the organization? What are the grant opportunities that exist for the organization? So number three here reverts to the organization's economics. Not that you need to be responsible for the day-to-day functions, but understand where the debits and credits lie within the organization and its financial operation, especially if you're receiving federal funding of any kind from any of the agencies, including Department of Education and any of the others. You need to know where the, where the expenses are and where the revenues are coming from. Keep in mind that internal controls, if you're receiving federal funding of any way, shape or form, you're mandated to have internal controls for three, three parts. Internal controls cover three major areas. The operation itself is the first one. The finance and accountability is the second thing, the finance and financial transactions. And third, compliance, making sure that everything is compliant in relation to federal funding requirements, all right? That, the compliance part of that, the internal controls of operation, finance, accounting and compliance, the three legs of the stool, so to speak, I get into quite a bit when we get into grant management. Because in grant management, we get into all the federal regulations and internal controls is mandated under federal regulations, so... But know that, that the organization economics and the internal controls, you need to have an understanding of how that works, must be established to implement, enforce, monitor and report on a regular basis, depending where your funding comes from. Policies and procedures must be in place as well. And every organization that receives any kind of federal funding or funding in general must have not only internal controls, but also policies and procedures in place that define what those internal controls are under each of those major areas, operation, finance and compliance. So, question so far. Please put them in the chat box if you got them, and I will do my best. This is the, one of the most important things for a grant writer because this is what I refer to as the teachable moment. Developing a rapport, build a rapport with everybody, with staff and with other stakeholders to educate them on a regular basis about the development process, the village concept of grant writing and the role that everyone can play in the development of a grant. Again, the grant writer is not the Lone Ranger. The grant writer does not work in a silo. The grant writer, I don't know how many other metaphors I, I could provide here. The grant writer is really the orchestra conductor, back to my favorite metaphor, being able to orchestrate all subject matter experts, everyone, to understand the importance and the role that they play in helping to make sure that grant applications are successful and that they, they're done properly. It takes a village. Talked about that. Identifying, and this is the role of the grant writer, to try the very bottom line there, identify potential SMEs, subject matter experts within the organization. Who has a good understanding of finance? Who has project development experience? You know, all of those people need to be identified and basically recruited to play a part in this. And that's a role that new grant writers need to understand and accept that they play a very important part of building rapport and educating not only their colleagues, but the greater community on the role that everyone plays in this, in the process of grant writing. Grant writers also need to be very methodical people. They need to have a system in place for several things. Being able, as I mentioned before, recruiting subject matter experts, but also gathering information and data, being able to obtain, store and retrieve information and data where it's available so that can be used hopefully in grant application processes. Or have the wherewithal and the capacity and also very, very important managers out there, the empowerment. We must be able to empower our grant writers and those that are responsible, without that title, but are responsible for grant writing and grant development, to be able to gather this information, to be able to gather the troops, to be able to find those subject matter experts. We must empower those people to have, to do these things. If we don't empower them to be able to have discussions with other colleagues and gather information that can be used, it's gonna be very, very difficult to put together, to gather the information that's needed. And there's a lot of data, most of the time, that's needed with grant applications, not just operational information, but also data from a financial standpoint perhaps, or from a compliance standpoint perhaps. We need to empower those people. And grant writers need to feel empowered, that they have the capacity and the ability to be able to do these kind of things so that the likelihood of a successful grant application is not in question. All right, so have a system in place. Keep in mind that federal, this is one thing, more on the grant management side, but keep in mind that federal funders require that grant recipients to safeguard what's called personally identifiable information. I'm sure you see this a lot in the school system where information on students, information on, you know, other, what could be... And you have to determine this, what is personally identifiable information? Is it a social security number? Is, is it ethnicity? Is it race? Is it physical address, marital status for us adults, anything? All of those things are considered personally identifiable information or PII. The recipients, this is relatively new, I wanna say going back maybe three years. The federal funders came out with this university... The federal funders came out with this universal requirement that any organization that receives federal funding must have mechanisms in place, must have internal controls, policies, and procedures that protect what's referred to as personally identifiable information. So, you know, these days, that gets into the realm of biometrics. You know, when we get into eye scans, fingerprint, those type of things, voice recognition, face recognition. The Seminole Tribe of Florida has what's called the chrono system for payroll purposes. And it's a biometric system where everyone in the employment of the tribe is given a four-digit number, and then a scan is taken of the, you know, fingerprint scan is taken. So when, when we log in every day, we're supposed to put in our four-digit code and our fingerprint to be recognized. Of course, nowadays with COVID-19, that's a little, the rules have changed a little bit. We still have the coding, of course, but of course, the biometrics part has been temporarily dropped. Also, where you see this more and more frequently is with airlines, as they're ramping up, Delta Airlines in particular, has what's called the CLEAR system. You know, you have three ways of getting through security at airports these days. You can go like, you know, just go through TSA as a normal, you know, normal passenger with your boarding ticket and your ID, and you stand in line with perhaps a hundred or even a thousand people in front of you, depending on the airport you're in. Or you can go through what's called TSA Pre-Check, which is what now about 10 years old, where it's a more streamlined process. You have to apply for that online. You have to go to a major airport. You have to go pay a fee, and then you can go what's called TSA Pre-Check, which streamlines your security check-in process. And now some airlines, Delta is the one I recognize most frequently because I'm a member of it. They have what's called the CLEAR system. They've integrated biometrics into their security system where they take a scan of your eye when you go into TSA, walk up to a kiosk, and there's, by the way, you pass those other two lines up, you go to the CLEAR line. There's a kiosk, and there's a human being standing there who's going to escort you through TSA check. But you go to the kiosk and it does a scan of your eye, which is already in the system, and then you're automatically cleared. They literally escort you through TSA check. You just need to have your boarding pass with you, and boom, you're through. So you, you know, and which is a lifesaver when you're going to a big airport. Like for me, it's through Atlanta Airport, which is huge. It streamlines that process, but that's biometrics, and that's part of personally identifiable information. Of course, I know tribal entities don't have the CLEAR system like Delta does, but still, we are responsible for maintaining the security of personally identifiable information. So that's more on the grant management side, a little prelude to what happens on that end. But having a system, a methodical system in place is the point I'm making here, that all grant writers and those responsible for grant development need to have a system. And being able with that system and with the village concept and with the access that we have, another thing that the grant writer needs to have the ability to do at any time for pursuing grant opportunities, and that is the ability and the empowerment and all the resources available to write a full proposal or have access to the information that would allow a full proposal. Have the information available that I talked about in number five, and the empowerment, and the ability to write a full proposal. And you see at the bottom side, bottom section, those are the seven components of the grant narrative that we're going to be talking about tomorrow afternoon. This is a prelude to what those are. The grant writer must be able to be able to formulate these seven fundamental components of every grant narrative. And that is the summary, sometimes referred to as the executive summary. More importantly, the need. What is the need for the, for the, for the grant opportunity? What is the community saying is the need to be able to articulate the need? Also, number three, which we'll get into, how to define the goals that are measurable and attainable using the logic model system to create smart goals. The plan of action, how are you going to go put things in place? What is the timeline of processes for the grant? Where, how is everything going to flow? Number five, evaluation. You cannot do number five if you are, if you skip number three. If you don't have measurable goals that are attainable and measurable, there's no way on planet Earth that you can evaluate the success or measure the attainment of your grant moving forward. Is this physically? No way to do it. So you'd never be able to answer the question from the funder, where are you? How are you going to measure the success of your program three months from now, six months from now, a year from now, without being able to articulate number five, which is based on three measurable goals? And also, number six, sustainability. How are you going to move forward? What is your fundraising plan? I don't know of a funder on the planet that wants to be the sole provider of funding in perpetuity for your program. They want to know, this is part of the return on investment. They want to know that you have the wherewithal, the capacity, and the ability to sustain yourself by having funding opportunities from other sources at your disposal. And you have to be able to identify what those are, and you have to be able to articulate what they are. Leveraging, I'll talk about leveraging. Leveraging plays a part in sustainability. Being able to leverage assets that you might have, or that someone else, or something else might have, being able to leverage those assets to be able to use them yourself for your grant. And we'll talk about how to identify what they are and how to maybe leverage them, how to calculate leveraging, so that it can be incorporated into your grant and it can be part of your sustainability. How are you going to sustain the bill, the program long-term? And then the last thing, of course, is the budget. There's not a budget, and there's not a grant on Earth that's going to allow you to not be able to articulate what your budget is. And the budget usually comes in two sections. One is purely data-driven, where you're just plugging in numbers, but there's also a narrative component to it, where you have to explain in words what your narrative is, and it must not only match what's on the data side of your budget, but it has to be, of course, transparent. So we'll talk about that. But those are the seven beautiful things of the narrative. Instead of the seven deadly sins, we have the seven beautiful components of a successful narrative. So a little bit more on that. The seventh of 10 key items for new grant writers is developing a tracking system. Now, of course, this is assuming that you would get the grant, and you'd be able to have your sustainability, be able to measure progress. This is more, of course, on grant management. Have a system in place where you can track the system, whether it's pre-grant or post-grant requirements. You've got to be able to have a tracking system in place. You have to think that through. If possible, develop relationship with funders. Always a good move, whether they're a federal funding agency, like Department of Education, Department of Energy, or HUD, or whether they're private foundations, private or corporate funders. What do I mean by corporate funders? Corporate funder could be a bank. It could be any type of corporation, basically. But the important thing here is trying to build a relationship with those funders. Conduct research, you know, if you can, again, maybe using the community to help. Conduct research for tribal leaders or members who might know board members of foundations, of corporations, or community grant funding organizations. In other words, use the resources you have and the community you have to help identify not only subject matter experts within your circle of influence, but funders, and to the best of your ability, reach out to those funders, especially when, well, to all of them actually, whether it's a federal agency or a private foundation, as I mentioned, or a corporation, or a community organization. All of them are operated by humans like us, and they need, there's an opportunity to build a relationship with, take advantage of that to the best of your ability. If possible, meet with them if you can, especially when it comes on the private side, with private funders and community funders. A little bit difficult sometimes with the big federal agencies because a lot of them are based out of hubs like Seattle and Denver, and Phoenix, and Chicago, and Atlanta. It's difficult to get together on a face-to-face level. And of course, a lot of those, their corporate offices are in DC. But it's still something that we should endeavor to do to the best of our ability. Build relationships all around, within our circle of influences and out. And this is also critical for fundraising in general, fundraising in general. I talk about this a lot when I talk to organizations that want to start nonprofits. That's my background with not, is, you know, forming new small nonprofit organizations or maintaining nonprofit organizations and dealing with their board of directors. One of the things I tell people in organizations that groups that want to form nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable organizations is they need to have a fundraising plan. That's one of the basic questions that the Internal Revenue Service is going to ask of you or of the group if you're pursuing wanting to become a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit. And that is, what is your fundraising plan? And this kind of reverts back to what we were talking about here. Where are you going to get your funding? How are you going to sustain yourself in the long term? So having a fundraising plan is not only an important thing, it's a board of director obligation. It's part of their fiduciary responsibility of maintaining the organization. Same thing applies to you folks. Same thing applies to anyone that is pursuing funding. All right. Developing a relationship with funders, critical. Understanding the funder's world, this is important too. I've been doing this for a long time. I understand how the federal agencies work, and I have an equal understanding of how some of those on the private sector work. And this sometimes is an eye-opening experience or knowledge for some of potential new grant writers is what makes some of these organizations tick? What is their motive? You know, especially when it comes to the private side of funders, the corporate entities, the community organizations, the foundations, the Bill and Melinda Gates, the Kellogg Foundation, those others. What are they really interested in? What makes them tick? This is, the more you know about that, especially when it comes to corporate entities. You know, why in the world would Bank of America, for example, want to invest? What did they get out of providing, of being philanthropic and providing donations to an organization or grant opportunities? What are they looking for? What did they get out of it? And you'd be surprised, you might be surprised, that their motive is not always your reason. You know, they're not necessarily interested in finding a cure for teenage pregnancies, or finding a cure for diabetes, or contributing to that, or contributing to world education issues. Their motive might be more self-fulfilling, might be more to make them look good. And I don't mean that from a negative standpoint. I mean it from a corporate entity standpoint, to make themselves look more like a corporate citizen. So it's not always necessarily what we're doing. From a corporate standpoint, it's not necessarily always what we're doing. It's what they are trying to achieve in their corporate citizenship. Hope that makes sense. I'll get into that a little bit more tomorrow. The first part of tomorrow's presentation, when I talk about pursuing private funding from corporate entities in more detail, I'll get into that, and I'll name names. You know, name some organizations that have strong philanthropic processes, and some of them are native-centric, and I'll talk about that tomorrow. So stay tuned. If you're interested in corporate funding from a grant writing perspective or pursuing grant opportunities from corporate entities, stay tuned. Join me tomorrow for the first part of tomorrow afternoon because I think you'll find that very, very interesting, their way of looking at things. The last thing is enjoy your work. Grant writing is not easy. It is not easy. You know, there's a lot of grant opportunities out there, yes, but the success rate of getting those grants is relatively low. Even though there's a lot of opportunities, there's also a tremendous amount of competition out there. So one of the things we're going to get to tomorrow, first part of tomorrow afternoon, also, when we're going to, when I'm going to discuss navigating through some of those online portals, is I'm going to talk about, you know, what the opportunities are out there and how to apply for federal funding grant opportunities. How to not just navigate, but how to look for opportunities that have high chances of competition or low chances of competition. Looking to help identify those grant opportunities that have a better fit for what you're doing and the, you know, having an understanding of how to not only navigate through some of those online portals, but how to do the research once you find grant, you know, locating, creating a profile so that grant opportunities literally can come to you, sent to you by grants.gov or by the agencies themselves, but also be able to read the synopsis and look for some red flag things that show you what the chances are of getting this application. How many organizations are eligible to apply? And how many grant opportunities are going to be awarded? What the dollar amount is of the award, you know, from the low end to the high end? And how many actual awards are going to be presented? So theoretically, if an agency is owning, but be giving out $20,000 total, and they're going to be giving out, or let me change that. If an agency is giving out $5 million, let's say, $5 million, and the agencies or the organizations that can apply for include institutions of higher learning, nonprofit organizations, tribal entities that have federal, that are federally recognized, for-profit organizations, private individuals, that's a lot of entities that could apply for that grant, right? And we'll also know they're going to give $5 million, but they're only going to give five awards of $1 million each, and they're having, they're opening it up to all those different entities. You can imagine that the level of competition is going to be astronomical to do that. Five awards at $1 million each, and every entity under the sun can apply for it? Chances are, that might not be one to pursue. Those are the kind of indicators that I'll talk about tomorrow that make our work understandable. So the message here is to understand and to like everyone else understand that grant writing is not easy. It's difficult. And we should employ, we should enjoy what we do because the challenges are immense. But we can do it. So let's talk, let's go into, now that we've put 75 minutes under our belt here, let's talk a little bit about community involvement and program identification, which is, you know, what I've presented to you so far is just kind of a warm-up activity. Now, we're going to get into the community involvement part. Community involvement before proposal writing, before anything, as I kind of alluded to before, it's essential to create some kind of successful community development process where you have the ability, the capability, and the empowerment to solicit information from a larger group, whether it's an advisory group for the school, whether it's the community of parents and elders, or even a larger group. There's got to be a way that you can solicit, that you have the opportunity, the empowerment, and the capacity to solicit information to help you get an understanding, if you don't already know, where you want to take your fundraising opportunities in the form of grant writing. Remember, fundraising is very, very comprehensive. It's not fundraising in general. It's not fundraising in general. It is much more comprehensive than just grant writing. You could, under fundraising, you could, and we don't, and I'm not going to get into it here, we're focusing on grant writing, but fundraising is a nebulous term. It's a big term that could include not just grant writing, but capital campaigns, endowments, donations, there's all kinds of other things that can fall under fundraising and different events that can fall under fundraising to generate those things. But today, we're talking about grant writing and the basic fundamental here, and that is square number one is community involvement, getting to know the community and what you do to get to know the community. The community development process should be built upon the foundation of community involvement followed by planning, yeah? Needs are, should be, there's a word missing here, needs should be identified and prioritized. Strategies for identifying resources can be developed into potential products that address and communities' needs. That's great. The community might have more ideas than you have the capacity to follow up on. That is the one side of the equation and hopefully that's a good, that's a good problem is that the community, if you're doing this correctly, is providing actually more input on major initiatives than you could possibly do. That's good because then from there you could start working on defining what those major initiatives are and if they're realistic in, in pursuing them, that's something you need to do with your team. Community involvement, successful planning and development systems share the following features, kind of best practices here. Involvement and support, strong planning capacity, realistic goals, which will define, or not so much defined, but get into in a few minutes. Multiple approaches to achieve goals, multiple approaches to achieve goals. That's part of the goal development process. Strong organizational and management capacity and empowerment. I'm going to add that phrase in there. That's on the left side, on the right side. Description, the project concept, the more, what I mean by that is the more you can get out of the community, the more realistic, the more defined that the community's ideas or major initiatives are, the easier our job is to take that information and fine-tune it to create something that's pursuable. Again, hopefully what comes out of the community, what comes out of the solicitation from the community is very comprehensive and is actually, you know, more than what we can handle at any given time because we want to be able to have lots of opportunities. Also geographic description of projects, if possible, depends upon, you know, in your case, at the school, maybe geographic distribution is not so much of an issue, but with some tribe housing authorities that are spread out over larger territories, geographic distribution, it might be a concern. System for overcoming obstacles, hopefully that's something that can be discussed when you get into the planning section, overcoming obstacles, who's doing what, what are the obstacles to overcome? Systems for accountability, that's the, on the financial side. And partnerships and collaborations comma and leveraging opportunities. I'm going to add to that last bullet on the bottom right. Partnerships, collaborations that lead to leveraging, leveraging opportunities. And the word leveraging again is a nebulous term. It's a broad term. It could mean a lot of different things and more on that in a little bit. But leveraging is something that can be very, very beneficial to the grant, not only to the grant writer, but to the grant application if it's allowed, if leveraging is allowed. So more on that a little bit later. Community involvement, kind of best practices here. Community involvement usually focuses on five or six different processes. Step one, the actual community involvement, either face-to-face, maybe not so much these days with COVID-19, but community involvement, the solicitation of information from the community or whatever you define as the community, getting information. Maybe it's a written, maybe it's a survey that is sent out. If face-to-face can be done, you know, these days Zoom and, and WebEx are common. Whatever we can use these days to get ourselves in front of the community, to solicit information from them on what they consider to be important for the livelihood and for the future of the organization or for the school in your case. Step two, developing some kind, from that community involvement, developing some kind of a comprehensive plan, taking that info, or plans, plural, taking that information that the community develops and somehow sorting it out if it's more than one major initiative, being able to delineate, define what those major initiatives are. At this point, that's all I'm talking about, not, not define, not breaking down the goals, that's yet to come, that's step three, but just defining what those major initiatives are. What is important to the community for your organ, that pertains to your organization or that's doable by your organization? Step three, the process of goal development using the logic model, concept and SMART goals. So step three is taking step two to the next level. Step two is the precursor, the prerequisite to step three. You cannot define goals if you don't have major initiatives, that's step two. You can't nebulously create out of the blue unless you've already been given some direction. It's difficult to create major initiatives unless you have some kind of community involvement, whatever you call the community. I, I want to make some definition here. I want to be clear on one thing. When it comes to step three, goal development, now that's just two words that I'm using there. I want to make sure that we're, that for the sake of this presentation, I'm using certain semantics here. I'm referring to major initiatives as the big, the big project. The major initiative is, for example, the community center, a bricks and mortar community center with all of its functions. That is a concept of a major initiative. Another concept of a major initiative, and this is just off the top of my head, might be the creation of webinar training programs or curriculum for certain academic level. Those are major, what I refer to is a major initiative. And underneath the major initiative, every major initiative needs to have what I refer to as goals, okay? Goals in the short term, goals in the long term. And I'll get into that, but I'm kind of laying the foundation here because I want to make sure that you understand my semantics. When I refer to initiative, I'm talking about the big project, the very comprehensive effort that might be there, whether it's bricks and mortar or whether it's academic or whether it's intellectual or whether it's IT and those kind of things. So might they have major initiatives that might be, fall under any one of those four off the top of my head areas. So, and then every major initiative has a series of several goals, always several goals. The goals in my mind are the baby steps to the major initiative. So I just want to make sure everyone understands my usage of the terms. I know doing this presentation before, I've done the presentation where a group will say to me, well, we do it the other way around. We use goals to determine, to determine the major, you know, the, the big concept and then we use initiatives underneath that. That's fine. You can, you can interchange these things, but I just want you to know where I'm coming from and my terms because you're going to hear me refer to those, those terms over and over. Major initiatives and then goals and, and then I'll break it down even more from there with that. So step two, from my perspective, is getting the comprehensive, the major initiatives as defined by the community or larger, or larger entity that's providing you with some focus. Step three, start breaking those goals down. Part of that process is helping to identify what's realistic. What are those major initiatives can we do, let's say, in the next two years? What is realistic within the next five years and what's realistic even farther out? So you can see part of step two and part of step three, four and five, as a matter of fact, is also lends itself very nicely to strategic planning, right? That's another thing to talk about. When I talk about a dedicated training program on strategic planning, I use these same references because they're interchangeable. With strategic planning, grant writing plays a part of it, of course, but it's a bigger picture, but it still contains part one, part two and part three. The community involvement, comprehensive or major initiative creation, and then step three, what are those major initiatives that are realistic in the short term and in the long term and you define what is short term and long term? And then let's break these things down into those baby steps, those goals. More on that. Step four, getting into the planning. Now, you know, okay, we've really got an idea here. We've got a major initiative, we've even got some goals. Some of this happens simultaneously. Maybe the project planning helps in defining the goal development. So step four, step three, step four, and even step two to some degree kind of overlap. They kind of over, or can overlap. But I need to define them because I need a methodical process to not only instruct this so you have understanding, but to actually do it. So step two, major initiative. Step three, goal development. Step four, even with some overlapping, step four is now the planning process. Step three, as I've said, helps us to identify the goal. Okay, we can do this. We can do it so much that I can create, we can create five or six baby step goals to help us move in that direction. And if you can do that, then the project planning has a platform to work on. That's the next step. Then of course, once project planning is done, and this is where the orchestra conductor, the grant writer is going to be able to take all those instruments, all those subject matter experts working together, making beautiful music to be able to do step five. And that is the grant application itself and the seven beautiful components of it, the narrative, of the narrative, step five. Of course, in there, somewhere between step four and step five is going to be a search for grant opportunities. And I'll be honest with you, the search for grant writers, it's the search a lot of times that takes the most time. Grant writers tell me that, you know, a good 75% of their time day-to-day is looking for grant opportunities that fit based upon step one, two, three and four. You know, looking for grant opportunity, at least based on step one and step two. Looking for grant opportunities out there that meet the community's focus and perhaps even some of the goal development, that and the planning, that's how it should be. Let's step one, step two, step three and step four happen sequentially before you get into step five. So we should have a step four A and it's, or a step four and a half, and that is the search. Looking for, step four and a half would be the search, looking for, through all those online portals and all those opportunities I was alluding to before, looking for the search that fits nicely, as nicely as possible into step two, three, one, two and three. All right? Doing it any other way is chasing the wind. It's difficult. Really just going out there nebulously looking for grant opportunities without step one, step two and step three, you know, complete or in process is not a productive way to look for grants. So the concept of finding some kind of crazy grant out there because you've been searching and you come upon something and then you try to convince the community and your colleagues to pursue this without having the foundation underneath of a solid initiative and broken down goals that are attainable, that's, that is not the way to do it. My strong recommendation is to follow these steps to, you know, these are the best practices that I've used and I've seen over the years to some degree. You know, like I said, they overlap a little bit, but this is the methodical step process. And then of course, step six, assuming that, that the award is attained because you've done everything correctly in one, two, three, four, four and a half and five, is step six is the actual project management. You have the award and now you can implement it. That's grants management. That's a whole nother program, you know, a whole nother training program, but that's step six and it's a beautiful thing, you know, being able to get to that point. Everyone would love to say, I'm sure, from a grant writer perspective, well, from everyone from the top down and laterally, that you've got the award, you know, and now it's like, oh my God, we got the award, what do we do? That's project management and implementation. But good news, if you've done step one, step two, step three, step four, step four and a half and step five correctly and methodically, then step six should be a breeze. You've got everything in place. You've got your team. You've got your project planning team who are the components of helping you put the grant together and they're also your colleagues. So step six is really, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's a natural conclusion to the step, the previous five and a half steps that are done, if they're done properly. So I, you know, I'm very excited about this because I see this so clearly in my mind, even though things can overlap a little bit, it's a very clear concept in my mind. So a little bit more, let's break down, I'll just stay, take a few minutes here. I think I kind of nailed some of these things already, but step one, community involvement, the whole purpose of community involvement, identify the community's current and future temperature. What are their needs? What is critical? What do they see? Where do they see your growth? And the community, put quotations around the community because as I mentioned before, the community is your definition. What is the community? Is it simply your colleagues? Is it, or is it a broader, is it an advisory committee? Is it a board of directors and an advisory committee? Is it all of the above plus parents and larger, larger community? You define what that is. But what you want to do is be able to solicit that information, input from tribal organizations, community meetings, need surveys, whether they're online or written or simply by telephone, whatever, or, or is that called a multimedia approach? All of the above. You're using all of these things, including interviews with elder, elders, tribal leaders, veterans, youth, all, and you might have focus groups, steering committees, all of that's a multimedia. I listed everything I've seen from different organizations and I'm probably missing a few, but it's a multimedia approach to solicit information and that's what you want to do from the community and you need the empowerment and the capability to do it. And everyone's got a different approach, but I see nothing wrong with using the multimedia approach to solicit the information, if anything, to make sure you move it in the right direction. The second thing, which is equally difficult, engage the community to describe to the best of your ability and if they can, on their end, prioritize short-term, long-term, major initiatives. The more they can provide on that, the easier our job is on, not only on the compliance side, but on the development side to create benchmarks or thresholds in achieving the goals or initiatives. I don't want to use the word goals just yet. They have major initiatives. Community members should short, should sort identified needs into broad categories if they can. Also, if they can, create comprehensive long-term plans if that's possible. If not, that's probably something that's going to have to be delegated to the, to the smaller group, to the planning group and so on. The point here being the more comprehensive plan that can come out of the community, the better off we're going to be in the long run in developing our, the, the ins and outs, the nitty-gritty, the components of, of the program. So the more they can do, the less we have to do, so to speak, on the planning side. If they don't, if they give us big nebulous ideas, then that's more than we have to do on the planning side, but that's okay. That's part of the process. We want to be able to get to this point so that we have an understanding, a better understanding. And I'm hoping this makes sense. All right. Three, something I'm very, very excited about and that is goal development. Remember I talked about the division between major initiatives and now goal development. So here's just a real quick snapshot of what we're going to get into in a little more depth. Goal development, which is step three of community involvement, goal development, the process- the process by which the community builds on the comprehensive plan, AKA the major initiative for movement towards a long range vision. Okay. Every process, every component of goal development needs to have four major processes. I've talked about the first one, and that is coming up with at least one, if not two or three, major initiatives. The multimedia center for one, that could be one, and I'm just off the top of my head. Developing webinar programs for grade, for academic grades K through twelve, or for adults, for that matter. Training for adults. Or another major initiative could be making sure that, you know, some kind of training program for adults so that they are trained in a certain skill and that they're hired. So that could be a major initiative. Or something in the realm of IT or intellectual property could be another one. But everyone needs to have, we need to be able to have a major initiative. Then under that major initiative, there needs to be a goal, a series of goals, not just one goal, but probably several goals. And I'm going to say for every major initiative, you should have at least three to five goals. All right, the goals are the baby steps that I mentioned before. In my, in my brain, that's how I define this. The major initiative, and you can see on the screen there, just a snapshot, virtual education. So appropriate these days with COVID nineteen. Education that is, in this case geared towards adults, it's virtual. The goal would be to provide six webinar sessions in two thousand and twenty-one. And what makes that goal unique? Is that it's got a number assigned to it, it's measurable. Now, if it's realistic, I don't know, I'm just, it's just for sake of argument here. But the goal, the one goal here that you see on the screen is to provide six webinar sessions in two thousand and twenty-one. That seems like a realistic number. I don't know where the number came from, but it came, you know, like, yeah, I can't tell you, it came out of my head. But it's, it's go, it's real, it's good because it's realistic, it's measurable and attainable, I think. And from that, every goal needs to have an outcome in the short term, an outcome with a number assigned to it. If the goal is to, for example, to provide six webinar sessions, then the outcome in the short term is that in the short term, I think I'm referring here to one year, would be that sixty tribal members would be exposed to, adults would be exposed to training opportunities. That's in the short term. And in the long term, and the long term could be anything, but in here I'm, I'm using three years as a long, three to five years as a, as a long-term projection. There's the result would be that tribal membership awareness would increase by thirty percent. So you can see, just at a glance here, that goal development is performance-based. Everything's kind of moving that way, performance-based activities, goal development, and grant writing is no different. So this is, and just a snapshot, I'll get into this a little bit later, but I just wanted to show you what I mean and give you more clarification with the semantics that I'm using between major initiatives, goals, and then being able to measure those goals in the, in the short term and the long term, using outcomes and results. All right, as I mentioned before, not to be the dead horse, but the project planning is step four. Step five is the actual grant application, step six is the implementation. So here's where I'm going to give you a little bit of time. If we were face to face, I would, we would break up into, into small groups and see, you know, we'd spend about thirty minutes or so working with our small groups to see if you can identify community projects or community-driven projects, major initiatives. So I'm going to give you a little bit of time, but instead of thirty minutes, for the sake of what we're doing here, I have forty-one minutes after the hour. Let's take it to fifty minutes, so till ten minutes before the top of the hour. I'm going to give you just shy of nine or ten minutes to think about this, to come up with what I would consider to be major initiatives. Hopefully, the community-driven, or as it says here, identify the needs of the community and the project. Can you come up with a list of what would be considered major initiatives? If you want to put them in the chat box, that's fine. If you just want to write them down, that's fine. If you don't want to do the exercise, that's fine. At least think about it, because it's part of the grant writing process, to be able to identify what is important for your organization that is not just in your head or your interpretation of what it should be, but of, of a bigger scope. So you think about that, and we'll also take a little bit of break here, we'll meet back in about ten minutes. So my time would be twelve fifty. Thank you, two hours earlier than me. But I'm going to come back at twelve fifty, so I'm going to take a little bit of break here and I'll come back, and then we'll, we can do. All right, let's get back, we're going here. Thank you, everyone. Some of the, the input is phenomenal. I had no idea, next fifty years strategic plan, that is amazing. Fifty years into the future, my gosh. I don't see myself being alive. So far out, you know, it's amazing. But thank you, that, that, that's exactly all kinds of good stuff here. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about, the community citizen center, the daycare center, the community rec center for David, yes, that, that, that's exactly what I'm talking about is major, major initiatives. So hopefully, that's, that's exactly it. So hopefully, as we move through, some of this stuff will make sense from a grant writing perspective. All right. Now, we're moving into the second part here, establishing the project team. All right, we talked about this, alluded to this quite a bit, talking about the team. Now, we know we got to have some kind of team to work with us to put this together. This is, cannot be a Lone Ranger effort. This has got to be something that we have the capacity and the empowerment to bring other subject matter experts in with us, wherever they are, with a part of our colleagues or outside the organization, wherever we can reach out and get them from our teachable moments that we've been trying to do, is establish the project team. And my, my look at establishing the project team steps, step one, project planning. Step two, project management. Step three, getting an understanding of financial management. Then step four, step coordination. Step five, governing body communication, if need be, if we need to get, you know, different approvals involved, sometimes we have to deal with boards or tribal councils or other governing organizations. That might, that, you know, when it comes to us, you know, when it comes to the native learning center, we have, we have a process where we have to go through legal approval before it goes to tribal council. So we got to have it signed off by the attorney who's, who's assigned to the native learning center, who has been assigned since the native learning center's inception in two thousand and eight. Same, the same attorney, but the process remains the same, that attorney looks at it, gives approval, then it goes to, actually goes to the tribal council, yeah, tribal, the attorney, attorney general for his approval. Then sometimes need be, depending on what it is, it has to go to tribal council for approval, like with our Indian housing plan, for example, that's the, that's what we have to submit every year to HUD to show, to, to literally request for the federal funds we receive from the Indian Housing Block Grant, and that takes tribal council approval. So that would be step five here, or part of, there'd be several steps, several components within step five for the governing body. And you probably have something else too, if things have to go to the board for approval, for example, or to a higher, you know, or the community in general, whatever. And then step six is the, the actual grant writing process, and then step seven would be the project implementation and completion. And I, I'll go over these quick, I talked about this and they make sense. Step one is the actual project planning. So hope theoretically, we've got an initiative. I think you've spelled out in some of the things here, and we're getting into the actual project planning, if need be, then, and also that this would be a part and parcel of project planning, and that would be the management of the program. And you can see under management at the bottom, if we're talking about bricks and mortar in the building, using federal funds to build any type of bricks and mortar, you're getting into prevailing wage. If that is, if the tribe, if the neighborhood nation doesn't have its own prevailing wage rates, its own tribal rates for construction and rehabilitation, then you have to rely on prevailing wages as dictated by Davis Bacon guidelines. So you get in all that, and I see when we get into community recreation center and things like that, labor and, you know, obviously, construction might pay a part of that, and with construction's going to come labor costs. And with that come federal regulations, if you're using federal funds. Now, if you're using private funds to build any types of bricks and mortar, then you have much more flexibility and you're not obligated to use prevailing wage. And prevailing wage, if you don't know, are typically, almost exclusively, higher rates for the construction trades anywhere in the United States. And it's based on the county and the state and the trade that you're in. So a plumber, for example, or even better, a carpenter, a rough finish carpenter might make twenty-five dollars an hour under prevailing wage in, in the state of Arizona, for example, in the county, in Arizona, might be twenty-five dollars an hour. It might be twenty-seven if that person is in Fort Lauderdale, which is Broward County, Florida. If it, then that's, that's part of Davis Bacon. If it's private work, then that same carpenter might be making twenty or nineteen. The rates tend to be a little bit lower, but that would be under private construction. Anyway, getting back to this, Davis Bacon and construction might be a part of, part of the project, so. And that goes, that goes without saying. All right, step three, financial management, this is also part of it as well. You know, there's going to be, obviously, there's going to be some funds that are associated with it. There's going to be financial management and staffing, perhaps. management and staffing perhaps. All of these, I hope makes sense. This is all part of the project team process. They need to take all this into consideration. And as I mentioned before, there's gonna be a governing body that has to give approval. And then step six is the actual grant writing process. And I want to point something out to you here. And that is the bottom line there, where it says most grant range from $5,000 to $30,000. That seems like, you know, to me, that seems like a relatively low number. One thing I want to point out, when we start talking about, and this would be tomorrow, first part of the afternoon, when we talk about searching for online portals, and I mentioned that you, you're able to, the nice thing about grants.gov and some of these other online portals is you can get an idea of what the grant amount is and what the, what the, what your obligations are for applying for that grant. And one of them is the, the threshold, the dollar range of what the grant is. And one thing I want to point out with that dollar range, which might be very, very important. I've noticed over the years that some tribes have some requirements when it comes to applying for funding. Some tribes have stipulations that say you could apply for a grant as long as it's over X amount of dollars, like for example, over $5,000 or maybe over $30,000, but nothing less than that, because any type of grant that's less than $30,000, quite frankly, might not worth, might not be worth the time and energy that staff have to spend on putting all the components together, and then of course, for monitoring it. You know, if it's over $30,000, then maybe, and I'm just throwing those numbers out there. Every tribe's a little bit different. They might say, don't, you know, apply for anything. On the other hand, they might have a threshold that only apply for grants that are over $50,000, because anything less than that is not worth the time and energy to pursue, to monitor, and to manage. So that might be a stipulation. Other, and you need to know this, other organizations that are tribal entities might say, might have a stipulation on leveraging or what's called matching. The grant application might require a matching requirement. In other words, the grant might be worth $100,000, but, but you can only apply for it if you provide 20,000 of the 100. So a 20% match. Some tribes will say, don't pursue grant opportunities that have a match, because we don't want to obligate our resources as leverage towards that grant. Some tribes have that stipulation. Others will say, depending upon how, what the percentage is, you can go for matching. So in other words, some tribes will say, don't pursue grants that have any matching at all, and others have a threshold of what the matching requirement is. And this is where leveraging of resources and assets comes into play, because theoretically, grant, some grants might have a matching requirement, and let's just say it's 10%. And you're pursuing a grant that's $100,000 theoretically, which means you'd have to put up 10,000 to get 90, the total amount of $100,000. How, what assets do you use for that, what I call leveraging, to make sure that you make, you know, you satisfy the match? What, what assets do you use? What resources do you use? Are you empowered to use them? What processes do you need to go to get approval to use them? And how do you calculate some of those assets that might be a little intangible? How do you calculate them? How do you treat them to show that they have a value? And let me, let me give you an example. Let's use volunteers as an example. The grant, $100,000, you've got a 10% match. You want to use volunteers to satisfy the match, because it's a hands-on type of thing. You can use volunteers as an asset towards it. But how do you calculate volunteers and their time, since they're not paid? How do you calculate that? And that, that's, that's a typical scenario. And in that scenario, you'd have to come up with some kind of a value, some kind of a wage and benefit, theoretically, that you would pay the volunteer if that person were employed by you in that position, for that position. How much theoretically would you pay that person in wage and benefit to come up with a total amount, and then calculate how many hours per week would be required of that individual or individuals, and use that formula to calculate the value of what volunteers would be to use as leverage in your matching for your grant. And that's just one, you know, when you're using volunteers. There might be some other things. Some, some tribal entities might have to deal with heavy equipment, for example, if it's in construction. They don't have a front-end loader, but another department does have a front-end loader, and they're willing to be able to use that front-end loader for the building of, for laying the groundwork, you know, the land, not landscaping, but the major groundwork for the Community Recreation Center. You gotta be able to level that and make sure that that ground is clear and leveled, and that's where the front-end loaders and the big equipment comes in. You don't have that equipment. You're not gonna buy a $500,000 grading machine, front-end loader. You're gonna use another, hopefully, use another department's equipment and the labor perhaps that comes with it, and then you need to calculate what the value is of using that equipment and the labor calculations that come with it, as I did with the volunteers. You need to be able to do the same thing with the equipment on a per hour basis. How many hours per day, for how long is that heavy, that front-end loader gonna be used, and the person who's operating it gets paid a wage. What is that wage? Is it gonna be Davis Bacon wage to operate that heavy equipment? That's gonna be very specific dollar amount. Or is it gonna be a tribal wage, if the tribe has a wage? Those things are, those are part of the components that need to be, that need to be calculated. So those kind of scenarios of calculating leverage to use as matching can be done. And those are just two examples. But you can see, and you can imagine, there's gonna have to be some kind of process, approve, you have to identify, first of all, what those assets are. Do you have access to them? Do you have the authority to reach out and to negotiate a use of that kind of equipment? If not, who do you go to, or what do you go to to get that approval? And then you're gonna have to do, or your team's gonna have to do the research, what is that value? What is that asset worth, and how much are you gonna use? So this is all part of, of, of just the leveraging part of it as part of the matching. But it can be done. It's done all the time. And also, getting back to the, to the screen here, the bottom, the grant range, there also might be some other requirements that the tribe might have on how much you can pursue with grant opportunity. So it's really good to be able to have the knowledge and the skill set to be able to look for these grant opportunities, to determine the value of the grant, how much the award is, and know, are there any requirements that my authorities have, that my tribal entity has, or school, or governing agency has, governing board has, on how much we can apply for, and what other stipulations there are. So enough on that, the grant writing process, step six. Hope that makes sense. Project implementation, that's grant management, that's after the fact. All right? So we're gonna, just a little bit, here's the leveraging resources, what I talked about, just kind of, just a little bit more. I think this has got all the stuff I just, just talked about. Funders' perspective, I alluded to this earlier. Funders want to see proposals that solve a problem or address a need. All right? This is really important when it comes to narrative writing. We never want, as grant writers, we never want to put ourselves in a position where we write a grant or try to write a narrative for a grant that is so gloom and doom with a problem that is so unattainable, unsatisfyingly unattainable, that the solution can never be attained, you know, never be fixed. This is something from a funder's perspective, they don't want to see that either. They know that there are some big issues out in the bigger community that have to be resolved. And some of them have, have, have a need for long-term approach, because the resolving them is a long-term effort. That's fine. But we don't want to ever, and this is when we get into writing the narrative, of course. We never want to write the narrative in a way, or present the need in a way that it's unsolvable. So that's something. Funders look at that. Funders want to know, and we talked about the investment, the return on investment. Funders are, and we all are, looking for positive results. We want to make sure that that's always clear, even though we might have some negative, some things that are not so positive along the way. Funders and, and grant writers want positive results. The only way we can describe our positive results is in the goal development that we're gonna be talking about, right? We gotta have the initiative. We gotta have goals that are attainable and measurable. Now, from time to time, some of those goals might not be reached. That happens. It happens in our strategic plan, right? And what happens in our strategic plan, whether it's three years, five years, 10 years, or 50 years, when we have our goals and we don't reach them, when we don't always reach positive incremental results, what do we do? Theoretically, we adjust, don't we? We adjust our goals, and we adjust our long, short-term and long-term, and even strategic plan accordingly. But it's okay to have incremental losses that are part of a larger, longer-term situation of positive results. And that's what it's talking about here. Funders and all of us want to be able to demonstrate positive results. Otherwise, we might as well get out of the game if we're not presenting positive results. And this will become crystal clear when we get into the grant narrative part. Funders look for projects that produce clear incomes and lasting results, and that's what the logic model will help us to demonstrate when we get, when you get into that. Human and financial resources, this is a part of leveraging itself. The other two slides shouldn't have been called leveraging. Here's where we get into actual leveraging. Those other two slides should have been named from a funder's perspective. But now we're getting into leveraging. So in addition to the volunteer scenario that I gave you, and to the front-end loader, heavy equipment scenario that I gave you a moment ago, you also have financial resources and human resources. The volunteers could fall under the human resources. Financial resources could include cash or financial accounting. There might literally be cash that can be moved from one account into another account that could be used as leverage for matching of a grant, okay? The front-end loader scenario for heavy equipment would be a third category, and that would be equipment that could fall on, that could be a third category here, along with financial and human resources that could be used. Federal, state, tribal, and other local organizations can be great project partners. Here's where that last sentence here is talking about, to some extent, our potential partnerships we have with organizations outside of our, of our entity. Building those, building those relationships and bonding, whatever you want to call it, outside the organizations might in the long term somehow turn into opportunities for leverage. Not only do we want to get outside organizations to give us support in what we do, because that, because what we're doing might affect them positively in some way. We also want to hopefully raise them to the next level, that they are contributing to our, to our leveraging, to our, to our matching of our grant opportunities, and maybe from them, from our bonding efforts, from our partnership efforts, they provide not only cash, you know, not only the simple letter of understanding or letter of cooperation, but actual financial contributions. Or maybe some of those volunteers that we talked about earlier, or maybe they have some of the equipment, maybe not front-end loaders, that's, that's kind of rare, but maybe trucks or other vehicles or buses, or something, other type of equipment that's more readily available, that could be used, that could be donated, and then used as leverage, the donation, the donated vehicle, or whatever can be transformed, what's the word they use, extrapolated, to use an accounting word, in a way that, you know, you could use, you can calculate the value. So those are some, some interesting things that could happen from our bonding with outside organizations and the use of leverage. Tribal and other resources, tribal, other tribal governments, donations from individuals, that's what I talked about a moment ago, private foundations, outside businesses could, based on our relationship, could be used, state and federal loan guarantees, other grant, there's all kinds of opportunities out there, and potential partnering opportunities. Land, at the bottom of there, it says land needed for a project. Maybe the tribe doesn't have, maybe the tribal entity is small, maybe you need land, you don't, tribe doesn't have land, but maybe you've got a great relationship with some other organization that would, that would perhaps volunteer, or not volunteers in one word, donate that land, or at least be able to use the land on a long-term lease situation, where you can convert that, not only use the land, but you could use the value, the value of that lease, the value of that land as part of your leverage for your grant application. Those are all positive scenarios that, that could work. And I talked about volunteers, direct admin costs might be where, land, I talked about that, tribal resources, federal resources. Other, there's all kinds of things. There might be some private agencies out there that are willing to, you know, you know, and at the bottom there, it says memorandum of understanding. What we want to do is build relationships to the best of our ability with outside organizations. So we rise above this. We rise above the memorandum of understanding and agreement that, you know, they support what we're doing. It's a great thing, you're doing this, we'll give you a memorandum of understanding, memorandum of cooperation. But we want to raise it to the next level if we can, to see if those organizations that love us so much are willing to put their money where their mouth is, and literally provide some kind of donation or resource that we can convert somehow and use as leverage. That's a win-win situation, and that comes down to building those relationships to the best of our ability with outside organizations. Goods and services, I talked about land. Evidence, you'd be required, of course, yeah, evidence, of course. And I don't mean in a court of law, but you need to be able to show, going back to the letter of understanding, letter of commitment from our potential partners, that's part of the evidence trail. You know, you need to be able to calculate a value on these things, following, of course, generally accepted accounting principles. That's where your finance people can help. So you need to have a commitment from that. It can't just be a verbal, yeah, we love you, we're gonna do this. You can, you can use our land over there. We've got an acre of land. It needs to be a little more formal than that, a lot more formal than that, and it needs to have like, an evidence trail and a value assigned to it, because it might end up, as it indicates here, if you're doing financial, financial, quarterly financial reports, the SF 425, you know, when you start receiving federal funding, you're gonna have, as you know, you're gonna have to start reporting on that on a frequent basis. SF 425 is not quarterly, and any leveraging that you have that adds to the value of, of the grant is included in that too. So that all has to be finalized. And some grant applications, as you can see here on the screen here, actually award points. It's spelled out. When you start getting in, you'll get into what's called the NOFA, which is a Notice of Funding Opportunity, or NOFA, N-O-F-A, a notice of funding availability. A lot of them are moving towards using assigning points for leveraging. Overall, a lot of the federal brands use a point system, as you may know, to calculate who's got the highest score, who's eligible. And what I'm seeing more and more is leveraging is getting more and more points assigned to it, and this is just a scenario that came out of a real grant application. For leveraging points, leveraging, for using leveraging, and the value of the, the dollar value of the, of the leveraged asset that you were being used was to be converted to points. And you can see, it says, for example, five points awarded for commitment leveraged resources of 25% or more towards the total project cost, and then it goes down from there based on a smaller percentage of leveraging. So I'm seeing this more and more in applications. Keep this in mind, that leveraging, it's a good thing. The more you can consider leveraging to be used towards matching requirements of federal funding, and all federal funding will help you in a variety of different ways. It will, first of all, lessen your financial responsibility to the funder. It will lessen your requirements for financial reporting, once you receive the award. It will increase, at the front end, it would possibly increase your potential to receive the award. The more leveraging you can build in for your grant, even if matching The more leveraging you can build in towards your grant, even if matching is not involved, look for this type of requirement to see if, if awards are given for leveraging, even if it's not a requirement in the grant. So you can get, uh, more points and have greater possibility of, uh, getting the award. So that's a beautiful thing, you know, and something to keep, uh, keep in mind. All right, another work activity for you, lesser focus, but still, still important. I'm just going to give you, I got, um, 117, so I'm just going to give you, uh, five minutes here, uh, to think about this. If you're putting together a project team based on the information you kindly provided, like David put up the community rec center, wonderful idea. And I see Dorothy put up community senior citizen. Okay, let's take it to the next step now, if you haven't already done so. Who would you, who's going to be on that team? Who would you recruit? Who would be amongst your colleagues, if any, who would be on the project team? And to what capacity do you see them? I don't need names, Johnny and Jane, but I'm looking for, you know, uh, you know, maybe positions. Uh, and more importantly, the second half of that statement there, any strategic partners that you could identify outside of your organization? And thirdly, are there any leverage resources at your disposal? So I'm going to give you a few more minutes to think about this. Let's take it to, uh, 25 after the hour. You can put your answers, if you wish, in the chat box, or just jot them down. Or you don't have to do this task at all if you don't wish to, but I, I would encourage you to do so because it helps you think through the next logical process. And that's, who's on your team? Who's going to help you, at least, who would you want to be on that team if you haven't already identified? Again, not naming names, just trying to identify who you think would be responsible, um, at least for the development part of your, uh, major initiative. Some time to think about that. We'll go into the final part. All right, I'm going to keep going, even though I said 25 after the hour. It looks like everyone is going to put up anything, has done so. Um, Dorothy, exactly, exactly right. Um, team members, tribal leaders, elder community members, local project managers, design and engineering project manager, finance officer. That is exactly, and I'm sure you probably have the exact individual in mind. Those titles are exactly what we're talking about here. And of course, it needs to be as manageable as possible. Because, you know, like any type of group, having too many people, uh, yeah, yeah. Elvin, project team members, upper middle management, decision makers, board of directors, finance, community elected, grant writer, of course. Uh, strategic partners, yes, and the more you can identify, the better. So experts in the field, if you could identify them, those are those, the strategic partners we're looking for. Exactly. And like anything else, you know, any other, any type of meeting, whether it's a board meeting, whether it's a community meeting, you need to not only have a diverse group of people that are responsible for the different components, as best you can identify, but you want to have this group in a manageable size. Not too many people. You know, you know how it is, you get too many people, and I've been in association management for years and years and years. And I remember when we were back, when I was back with the trade association back in the day. This board, it, it was a great organization, and this particular chapter, which is in Pennsylvania, had 27 people on its board. And as you can imagine, 27 people plus the executive director on the, on the board, it was difficult, to say the least, to get decisions made. There was, you know, it was difficult for the chair to keep control of the group of 27 participating members, each with the potential for a vote, not the executive director, but the board members, and just so much. So, you know, my, my word of caution here is, we want to have, as described here by Dorothy and by Elvin, we want to have a diverse group of people that are responsible. But to some extent, we want to try to, yeah, Monica, executive director, finance, chapter president, community service director. We want to try to the best of our ability as the person responsible to. I don't want to use the word cherry pick, but I, I'm just going to say that because everyone recognizes what that is. We want to make sure that the group is manageable and that we have the right people involved in there, so that decisions can be made and authorities and empowerment can be bestowed, and you can move forward with it. So, Eze, this is exactly what I was talking about, your answers are absolutely right. So let's go, let's, let's wrap up the last half hour. I'm going to move, I've been talking about this stuff, so I don't think you'll find it much as a surprise. Uh, I'm going to go through the SWOT analysis, and then the, the second part is going to be the more on the goal development using the logic model and SMART system. I've been talking about both of these, and I want to take the remaining 30, uh, 30, 35 minutes that we have left to talk about this and taking what we have established so far. The information from the community, major initiatives that were generated by the community or with the help of the community, our project team, and, you know, the roles that they play, and take it to the next level. Now that we've got this information on major initiatives, right? We've probably got several, looking at your list, you have a boatload of major initiatives. How do you start breaking these things down so that they are manageable to move forward with? You need a plan to move forward before you can start looking for grant opportunities, because you have a shopping list of major initiatives here. This is where I think the SWOT analysis, if you've never done that before, I know some of this is old news to you, some of it might be new to others. But this is where the SWOT analysis and the goal development can help us as project team of, and as grant writers, grant developers, to help, to help give us the tools to be able to do what we need to do. And that is to identify the initiative, to assign goals to it that are manageable and attainable, and then put that package together so that we can start looking for funding opportunities. All right, so let's go through here, this is the third part, part of the, the third part here. This isn't writing the package, but it is organizing, this is part of the organization. Tomorrow, we're going to get into the writing, but let's move on to the SWOT analysis and goal development using the logic model. Yeah, do, then listen to their ideas and comments and utilize it to write the grant, absolutely. A lot of what grant writers do is listen, don't they? They listen. That's, that's, they listen to, obviously listen to what the community has to say, listen to what leadership has to say, listen to what our strategic partners have to say, and listen to what the grant funders have to say. All right, back over to the screen here, topics, SWOT, goal development, long-term outcomes, SWOT analysis. If you've never heard of it, strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's an analysis that we can do internally and externally. You can do it within your department, you can do it within your organization, you can do it within your community. The whole idea is to help find where you need, where you're strong and where you have some challenges, and what are those challenges? So it's going to be unique to every organization, and it's a practice that I would recommend that you do. If you haven't done it, I would suggest that you do it. Uh, because it can help identify where, obviously, where your strengths and weaknesses are, at least so everyone has a basic funding, uh, uh, understanding. And then from there, we can move into grant development. Strengths are, uh, consider them to be internal. It says what strengths, what are the strengths of your organization, or your department, or yourself, for that matter? Are, uh, what are the perceived or real strengths of your organization? What, what are, where are you distinctive? What are those things your organization does best? What are those things your organization does that sets it apart? Remember, organization can, it could be department, it could be organization, it could be yourself. And at the bottom there, it says, think in terms of what you have that is missing from other organization. What makes you unique, all right? We, and it's also internal, something within the group, you know, or within the department, within the organization, within yourself. Weaknesses, same thing, and internal, what are your challenges? And this is where we need to be honest with ourselves without pointing fingers at others. And this is not a, if she only did her job, I would be able to do my job. Or if he only did this, I'd be able to do this. That, that, that's not what the analysis of weaknesses is. The analysis of weaknesses within the organization or department or whatever is to look at internal challenges. Right, what are the perceived, perceived or real weaknesses or challenges for your organization that, that are debilitating? And this is where you need to be honest with yourself, what could be done better? Are there processes, for example, that aren't being fulfilled? Because maybe the position is vacant, or there's just a lack of understanding of, of the requirements of the position, of the role, you know, the duties. Where are you vulnerable? Is there anything that's dangerously lacking? So we've got strengths and weaknesses on the internal perspective. And now we have some, a look at opportunities which are outside the op organization, which could come to us, such as partnerships with outside organizations. We are not in our department, they're not in ourselves, they're not in our organization, they're outside. But the better we do in building those relationships, the more opportunities we have. This is outside the organization, what opportunities do you know about, but have not been able to address? What are some of the emerging trends? Like in social media, social media changes, not only daily, it changes hourly. And if you're not on every social media platform, you're behind, and allowed to be on that platform, then you're behind the curve. You need to be on, you know, and something to think about. Do you want to be on all those social media platforms? It depends on how aggressive your social media campaign is to get the word out and/or to solicit information in. So that's, you know, that's just one example of, of, that could be internal and it could be external opportunity, um, emerging trends. Uh, more, there we go, threats, the last one. Again, outside the organization, what are those threats outside that, you know, we have absolutely no control over? Uh, or even within the organization, you know, budgets, uh, on a tribal level, on a, on a regional level, state level, national level, that might have some kind of trickle-down effect upon our organization? One that I can think of off the top of my head, federal funding. Now, the word went just right out of my head. It's an automatic reduction of funding every year, it'll come to me, uh, every year that's put into place, and we have no control over it, it's an automatic, it's been in place for about five years. It's a reduction of federal funding, all the agencies are affected by it. Uh, I'll think of it when I come back, because I don't think I have it on the presentation. But anyway, if I think of it, I'll tell you. It's, it's something we have no control over, it's an automatic reduction of federal funding. Every agency has to deal with it. And of course, the trickle-down effect is, we're affected by it too. So though, that's just one example of outside threats that are out there. There could be all kinds of other roadblocks out there, uh, that affect us. I don't want to say matriculation, that's an educational term. Sequestration, sequestration, that's the word I'm looking for. And that's on, that's a federal, it's a term used in federal funding, and it's the automatic reduction of federal funding across all agencies. And it's been in effect some time, and eventually, it's going to affect us. Sequestration, we have absolutely no control over it. So, strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So let's, let's break down real quick, let me walk through here, my examples of some samples of internal strengths. Left column, now obviously it's in green mostly because it's showing, you know, positive things, internal, internal strengths. Staff expertise, that's always a wonderful, positive str, internal strength. Good morale and attitude, uh, is great, good leadership and transparency, uh, a strong mission and vision, a good corporate style by our leadership, that's always, yeah, thank you, David, sequestration, exactly. You got it. Uh, a reputation, positive relationships with the staff and, you know, and faculty and other positive relationships are great internal strengths. And good policies and procedures, uh, need to be in place, internal controls. Uh, professional development being one of them. If you receive federal funding, you've got to have what's called professional development, uh, in place. And there's some reasons why, pretty straightforward, well-educated people are happy people most of the time. Uh, or tend to be, statistics show, they're more loyal, uh, more productive. And your organization's required to have it if they receive federal funding. So let's go to the next category, and I'm sure you have a lot of these you can think of yourself. Internal weaknesses, maybe that same department or organization has some staff turnover issues. That could be a challenge, especially, um, if it's at the key, at key positions. Uh, bad morale or poor attitude, lack of efficiency, lack of being able to do processes efficiently because of various reasons can be a real problem. It can end up, um, slowing the organization down, it could also end up on audit findings. And that's the last thing you want to have on a program review or audit finding, is that there is processes that should be done that are not being done. And, you know, that's like the kiss of death, you know, you do not want to have that. Fear of change, that, that applies to a lot of different organizations and a lot of people. You know, we've always done things this way, and now you want to do it that way, and I don't know if I'm on board. You know, I don't know how to do it. Fear of change can be debilitating, and it, that's why it's ending up on the weakness or the challenge side. Location can be a problem. Uh, penalties or restrictions that are put on us by, by our funders, by our tribal entities, by other entities could reflect, it could, you know, dampen what we do, slow us down. Internal politics is also a problem, and as I mentioned prior, so is lack of professional development, professional training. Yeah, you don't have to take the quiz, let me go to the, give you the answers to these. Are, should all organizations have policies and procedures? Yes or no? Well, obviously, the answer is yes. Policies and procedures should be, thank you, Dorothy. Policies and procedures should be written down, yes or no?
Yes.
Go ahead. Thank you. Yes. Can anybody write a good policy or procedure?
No.
I always get a mixed answer here. A lot, half the group will say yes, and half the group will say no. I'm in the yes category. I think with education and training, like today, for example, then just about anyone can write good policy and procedures. I'm leaning more towards the yes. But the latter two are interesting. Most policies and procedures are written after something happens. Yes, unfortunately, that is the case. Hopefully, it's nothing detrimental, but that's typically the case. Something happens, and then we put a procedure in case, in place to address it. That, that does happen. What we want to try to be is proactive as much as possible, of course, and to troubleshoot and to figure out what those potential situations could be. And the best way to be legally safe is to not write anything down. You want to do the best you can to put things in place in writing. And of course, if you receive federal funding, you've got to have internal controls, written. Internal controls and written policies and procedures, so. It's a little quiz there. All right, the latter two, external opportunities. Potential rapid growth by having those partnerships we're talking about somehow that could help us. New products and services that we're unaware of that could be established. Increased funding, hey, a windfall. We get increased funding instead of sequestration. Maybe we get a donation or something else out of our control which is, helps us in our funding efforts. Facility location could be something out of our control, but also a benefit. Potential partners, I talked about that. Strong economy always helps. Strong economies usually do help. Good relationships internally and extern, here, we're talking externally. So good relationships with, with our potential funders and with other potential leveraging organizations. And there's that professional development again. This is just a couple slides. This is a slide. This is the slide, yeah, another one's coming up, but this is the, the winners. The ones that weren't affected by sequestration too much. The winners of a, on a federal level, of 2021 federal, federal budget. Transportation, Veterans Affairs, Defense Department, and Homeland Security were the big winners for funding this year. So if you're receiving funding regarding any of these entities, rest assured, you know, the organization, the agency itself is having a, a good year from a funding standpoint. Threats. Weak economy, whether it's re, local, regional, or national. Political structure or elections could have a negative effect. The old perception versus reality could have, have an effect on us. Effect on fundraising, so can competition. Fear of the unknown, which is uncertainty, that's like, that could be debilitating, like fear of change. What I talked about a few slides ago, uncertainty is basically the same thing, but more on a global level. Who knows where the economy is going? Who knows, who knows where COVID-19 is going? That sends shockwaves, that sends fear throughout everyone. And what happens too is that fear translates into financial losses, believe it or not. Wall Street gets involved, Treasury bill rates fall, there's a calamity, stocks fall, the Dow Jones falls. Oh my gosh, everything is just a chain reaction, and we have no control over it. So, you know, that's what happens with uncertainty. Consumer apathy on a, on a, you know, cancer culture, I guess that's what consumer apathy is about. You know, okay, you know, some of those things do, do, you know, do affect us. Cost of operation and decreased funding, that's sequestration. Here's the other half of that graph. The agencies that lost funding, federal agency lost funding. You can see at the top, NASA lost a little bit of funding, nothing major. But then as you fall down that graph, you can see Justice, Energy, SBA, Treasury, Interior, then Education, almost 14% loss in funding across the board. Not necessarily individual programs, but general funding as a whole fell nearly 14%. HUD, 15 and a half, and so on, and way down at the bottom. Unfortunately, environment, the EPA took a huge hit, lost almost a third of its funding. And I think that was a carryover from the prior federal administration. And it's, oh, disregard for environmental issues. That, my understanding is changing. I don't think we're going to see those kind of losses with environmental issues EPA moving forward. So, but that's what happened under prior administration. So at a glance, here's what we have from left to right, internal strengths. Far left column, top to bottom, and then next to it, internal weaknesses, internal. Then to the right of that, the latter two columns, external opportunities and external threats. So normally, if we're meeting face to face, this would be a time for you to sit down, and I'm just going to give you just a minute to think about this. You've already, I know you already have. But, you know, normally, we would sit down and spend a little bit of time for you to determine where your strengths and, and weaknesses are internally. To the best of your ability to be as specific as possible, and then where your internal, external opportunities and your external threats are. And the reason to do this is to help determine where your priorities might be. Again, we would take this information and bring it, in fact, I'm just going to move on for sake of timing here. Move on to the latter part, and that is to take everything that we've determined so far. The community involvement to determine, or to help us determine what our major initiatives are. And then the second part, putting our team together, identifying our team. Thirdly, as we just finished determining where our strengths and weaknesses are based on our team analysis and initiatives. And lastly, here, in the preliminary for today, and that is goal development. So I just want to talk in the last 15, 20 minutes that we have here. I just want to talk about the last part of this day one training, and that is goal development using the logic model, as you can see there, and smart goals. It says the definition of a logic model is a pictorial diagram, usually, based on your organization's mission, always based on your mission, that shows the relationship between the things that we've been talking about today so far. The initiatives, call them what you want, focus areas, major objectives, whatever, but the initiatives, and the goals, AKA baby goals, as well as short-term outcomes and long-term results. Those are the four major components of a logic model. So let's look at it from a, from a, from a matrix or graphic standpoint, another way to look at this, a logic model. By the way, the logic model was created by the United Way about 25 years ago. I've all heard of the United Way. The United Way was being bombarded with grant applications from worthy smaller agencies that wanted funding. So back in the day, they came up of, the bright minds of the United Way on the corporate level, came up with this idea, and they created the logic model concept and required all of their applicants to follow this process. And to use this, what you're seeing here in front of you as the basic format. They could approve upon it, they could expand upon it, they could break it into sub-initiatives, sub-goals, and all kinds of more detail, but they had to at least do what's presented here in front of you now. And that is to come up with, and it's, it's been incorporated by a lot of federal funders. You see it all the time. It might not be called a logic model, but that's basically what it is. I call it a logic model because that's how I learned it from the United Way folks back in the day. And this is, one, one way or another, however you manipulate these things, it basically generates the same process for you. And that is to define a major initiative, one, two, or 10, like you've done so nicely. And then from there, to try to develop those goals that match up with the initiative. And then from, for each and every goal, whether it's one goal or 100 goals. The more goals you can have, the better, to define your initiative. For each goal, you develop an outcome and a result. So you look at, what you see on the screen is what I briefly showed you about an hour ago. The, the, the major initiative in this case is virtual education. I think this pertains to adults. And the goal, the first goal, there could be more, but the first goal is to provide six webinar sessions for academic year or fiscal year 2021. And the, the short-term outcome, always measured with a number. You've got to be able to calculate numbers. Without statistical information, this process doesn't work. So after the initiative, everything from that, every goal, every outcome, every result, needs to have some kind of statistic assigned to it, whether it's a number or a percentage. And you can see here, I use both. Outcomes are usually measured in, with numbers, with positive numbers. Results are usually indicated as a percentage gain or a percentage loss. In this scenario, with six webinar sessions being conducted in the school year, academic year, with the, with the outcome expected of 60 members being exposed to training opportunities, then the results theoretically anyway would be membership awareness increasing by 30%. What you see at the bottom, smart, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, tangible. Now, this simple representation is what we're talking, what I'm talking about when it comes to the logic model process. If you cannot follow something like this, then your initiative has no hope of being put into place. Because you've got to be able to take those huge initiatives. And everyone I see that you put into the chat box, like, up above here, there were community, early childhood building, and community library, community senior citizen center, community recreation center. Those are wonderful. So far, they're all bricks and mortar type of, type of things with very, I'm sure with various services in, with them for different age groups and different demographics. But mostly, what I'm seeing is a, a lot of bricks and mortar type of thing, and that's fine. But you've got, if you cannot convert those major initiatives and break them down into a series of goals, and you can imagine that a community center would have more than one goal. First of all, it's probably going to, a community center is going to be broken out into three major functions. And that is step one would be planning, step two would be construction, and step three would be staffing and implementation of services. So you would have goals within those three major areas, off the top of my head. But you could certainly do that. You could certainly take the first phase. That's what I'd call it, phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase one would be planning, and you would be able to break those down, break that down into a series of goals. In fact, I might even have that on here. Now, we're going to finish with my scenario here of webinars. And what I've done in this, in this slide here is showing you the next step. I'm trying to take that major, that initiative of education, virtual education, six webinars, with an outcome of 60 members and a result of awareness increasing by 30%. What you see underneath it is I'm trying to break it down into those actual six sections and tie it into the budget. Now, these numbers are simple, so bear with me. If you look at that second column underneath goal, you'll see October, December, and February. And of course, the next slide would be the next three. Let's jump to it, April, June, and August. But each one of them, let's go back that slide, each one of them, starting with October. Webinar number one, and webinar number one would have several components to it. Of course, you'd have to have a budget, you'd have to select instructor. For example, you would need curriculum, and you probably have to do some marketing. All of that's going to cost something. So to tie it into the budget, excuse me. To the, to the right of October, you can see it says 10 members are exposed. Costs $100. And to the right of that, when it says result, I'm speculating that a 5% increase in awareness. All of these numbers kind of fall into the initial goal concept that's listed above. Then you'll see December, and then you'll see February with the same expectations of outcome and results. And then the latter half of the year, April, June, and August, with its expectations of outcomes and results. Now, this is just one goal for the major initiative of education, and it's very simplistic. But I wanted to show you how the logic model process works, at least for a very simple concept. So this is it in a glance. The initiative, virtual education, provide six webinar sessions, you know, you heard me say that a couple times now for 2021. Let's, let's push it out to 2022. Now, I was an econ major in college, so I use this term a lot. Everything being, everything else being equal, is a term we use in economics quite a bit. So assuming, everything else being equal, that everything falls in place in school year 2021. If I push this out with that assumption, then 2022, there should be some improvements theoretically. We call that economies of scale, when things improve because prices decrease, productivity increases. So if you look at the column for 2022, you can see that our expectations have increased. Instead of six webinar sessions, it's increased to nine sessions. And then you can see the, the outcomes and everything else has increased. And theoretically, I could push this out to 2023, getting even more efficient. If you look under the 2023 column, you can see that we've increased from six up to nine sessions and so forth. And then we can push this out to 2024. So in effect, if everything stays equal, not only have I provided a logic model that I could use for my grant application in 2021, but I've also, in effect, laid the foundation for a strategic plan, at least for the next four years. Now, what happens, or how do we adjust, and how do we deal with the situation where in 2021, maybe things have, and they have, happened in 2000, when we did this projection for 2021. It was actually six months ago, a year ago, and COVID-19 got in the way for fiscal year 19. And those numbers that you see in the column for 2021 really did not materialize. Instead of six webinar sessions, we were only, we're only going to complete five. That's the reality of it, as we look at it now, I'm being hypothetical, of course. So obviously, the outcomes and the results are going to be different. If we only are able to get five webinar sessions, and that means we're not going to have 60 members. We're only going to have 52 members being exposed to training. And that's also going to have an effect on our results. Instead of a 30% increase, we're only going to have a 25% increase. So what happens with our, with our goal setting? What happens with our strategic plan, basically, since we're using the same concept here? If, if we have a decrease in the planned numbers in fiscal '21, or in reverse, if we have an increase, what happens to those numbers in 2022, 2023, and 2024? They change, don't they? They have to be, yeah, less members due to lack of interest in every household in 2021. Isn't that the truth? Yeah, that's that apathy thing I was talking about before, and how it has an effect. If there's a change in the current numbers, it's going to affect every subsequent year, correct? That's why this is a process that not only can be used for grant writing, or developing goals for our major initiatives, for a grant project. It also can be used as the foundation for our strategic plan. So when it comes, if it's not, do I have that on the next slide? Let me see. If, if, instead of education, and if this were the community center, phase one, planning, 2021, and one of those numbers of goals, one of those numbers that we have in 2021 for phase one planning of our community center was out of whack, did not come in that. Isn't that going to have an effect on everything else? The, the short answer is yes. And the long, the longer answer is without the logic model, we wouldn't be, and the process we have to go through to determine the, the, these, the, the major initiative, the goals, the outcome, and the results. If we cannot assign numbers to them, we don't, we don't have a project. We don't have an initiative. That's step number one. Step number through, two, once we go through this process, which might be a little bit painful as we're breaking things down, because this is just one goal of that major initiative. Imagine if you had 10 goals, but the more goals you have... Imagine if you had 10 goals, but the more goals you have, easier your job is into measure performance. And that's my point. If you don't go through this process, you're not able to measure your performance. So whether it's for grant writing for a project that's coming up this year or whether it's being used for a strategic plan that's three years out, four years out, or even 50 years out, as I saw, you've got strategic goals for grants and goals for strategic plan are alike. They're twins in the fact that they're living documents and they're subject to change. The logic model process proves that point, that once you go through the process and determine what your major initiatives are and what those baby step goals are, each goal having an outcome and a result. You've got to be able to, that is how you measure your progress. That is how you measure your success or failure challenges. And that's how we change our strategic plan. So sidebar here, if you have a strategic plan and you've gone through this process, strategic plans need to be reviewed, considered, they need to be considered living documents that are subject to change at any time, because goals change. And if your logic model from month to month, let alone from year to year, reflects changes based on internal or external forces, then you have to make changes. And so does your strategic plan. So that's a lesson for strategic planning. Using the logic model, the, the strategic plan is a living document. Don't ever, you know, have a strategic plan that's all nice and bound, put on a shelf. That is our strategic plan. No, a strategic plan is a living document. That should be desktop material. That should be with every board meeting, school board meeting. Your strategic plan needs to be a readily resourced document, subject to change as frequently as the goals change in your strategic, within your logic model. So whether we're talking grant writing or strategic planning, it's the same skill set. Goals need to be defined using the logic model system and SMART goals. And because we'll, you'll see when we get tomorrow, when we get into, when we get into narrative writing, that to be able to explain to the funder, well, how you're going to measure your success and the benchmarks that you have in place, you cannot do that effectively without going through this process. So I hope that makes sense. Yes, I do provide training on strategic planning and you just got a taste of it. That's what, that's what we, this is, this ladder for the last few minutes, talk, morphing this, this discussion on logic model and goal development using the logic model system and SMART goals. That is strategic planning. So yeah, to answer your question, David, I do that, and you've got a taste of it. That, this is what we do. And but there'd be more. You, you'd be actually defining what the initiatives are and the goals, and you'd be filling in the blanks, not me just showing an example of it. So we're at exactly the top of the hour, and I have just one thing to leave with you. It's not a task. I mean, if we were together as a group, I would leave this with you. You would work on this in your groups as you did the other two assignments, other couple of assignments. And that is to develop your own logic model using your major initiative and developing some kind of goals. And then, and let me say one thing, don't, when you're listing goals, don't list getting funding as a goal. That's really not a goal. Getting grant funding is an assumption. It's a given. It's not a goal. Your goal, your initiative and your goals need to be tangible, productive, measurable items, if that makes sense. Okay, that's what goes on. So if we were together, you'd work on this, you do, you take your initiative that you provided to me, and you would start the process of trying to break down goals. One, I would tell you, try to come up with three goals that match your major initiative. Think it through, get together with your teammate or your group, try to come up with three goals and that are measurable. Well, you'd go through the process to make sure they're measurable and attainable. Come up with outcomes and come up with results for each of those three goals. Okay, that's what I would ask you to do. So you would use that as part of the grant writing process. Strategic planning would take it to the next step and would do the bottom part. And that is to take it to the next level, to push out those goals, their outcomes and their results to the next year, to the subsequent year, to the third year, and so on, as far as you want to go. It gets progressively harder and progressively more subject to change the farther you push it out, of course. So this would be a task that I would have you do, but I'm not, I'm just going to leave this with you as the closing of today, because I think the last slide is, I think we're done. This is a review. So this is all we talked, we've covered a lot of territory today. Better understanding of the grant writer, how to solicit information from the community. Community depends on what you define it to be. We also talked to number three, the project program team and how to leverage resources. And then we closed out this afternoon with SWOT analysis, and we talked extensively about goal, throughout the whole thing, actually. Goal, because it's really the bread and butter of grant writing, and that is to define major initiatives and then break them down successfully into goals that are measurable and attainable, that generate outcomes that can be measured and results that can be measured. Without that, you don't have anything, really. You don't have anything. You certainly don't have a strategic plan. So let's discuss plans to implement it for school board. I'm going to involve trustees, yeah, definitely trustees, program managers and staff, community members. Absolutely, that, that's the concept. And everyone should be involved, especially with the SWOT analysis. That could be done, David. So absolutely. All right, tomorrow, we're doing number five and number six. So I'm going to let you go, just one minute here. Just want to tell you, tomorrow, we'll spend a little bit of time on navigating through the online portals, as I kind of alluded to. And then we'll finish out, we'll spend the bulk of time talking about that, the seven, the seven beautiful components of the grant narrative. And I think some of it might be eye opening for you if you've never done this before. But please come back tomorrow, same time, same station, and, and we'll do that, and we'll take it until we're done. So I'm going to stop recording now, because I think we're done. I'll hang here for a few minutes, but basically, that's the presentation for today. Thank you very much for everybody and for everything and for your input. Appreciate it very much. As you can tell, I love doing this training and I look forward to tomorrow. We're going to have a great time talking about a great topic. Some of the participants will, oh, absent tomorrow? Can you also record tomorrow's presentation? Yes, yes, Monica, of course. Yeah, I know what you mean. No problem, I will try and do that. And we'll start promptly at the top of the hour tomorrow, which is what? 11 o'clock, my time, your clock, and 9 AM your time? Okay, all right, so I'm going to go, see you all tomorrow. Thank you.
[noise]